Recording in progress.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm called to order meeting Whitehall City Council on this day, October 5th, 2021. If you would, join me for a moment of silence, followed by the French speeches. Thank you.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, please call roll.
Frederikas?
Present.
Elmore?
Present.
Coniston?
Present.
Kanter?
Present.
Peck?
Present.
Morrison?
Present.
Bailey?
Present.
President Potter? I'd like to excuse the absent member of council.
Second?
I have motion by Ms. Elmore and a second by Councilperson Kanter to excuse the absent member. Any comments or whatever you decide to tell on business and can't be here, I hope the travels, these travels are safe. Please call roll.
Frederikas?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. The absent member has been excused. Let's take a motion for approval of minutes for September 21st, 2021, the agenda and regular meeting minutes.
President Protown, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
I have motion by Coniston and a second by Kanter to approve the minutes. Ms. Aldridge, please call roll.
Frederikas?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Minutes have been approved. Next, we have a special presentation concerning Bottoms Up Diaper Drive, and I'll refer to Councilperson Elmore to introduce our guest.
Thank you, President Protown. I had the pleasure of meeting Joe at a Whitehall Bexley Rotary Breakfast. And to me, what their nonprofit represents is where love, faith, and passion meet. That's the way I can explain them. What they do is provide diapers for single mothers, and I will let Joe come up and give her presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurie. I had the pleasure of meeting Laurie a few weeks ago, and she invited me. Do I, do I keep this on? Can I?
You can take it off as you're speaking, so we can hear you, and the people watching can hear you.
Yeah, thank you. So, as Laurie said, I am Joe Welsh, president and co-founder of Bottoms Up Diaper Drive. And we collect donated diapers and give them to folks in need. So, we give diapers to people that give diapers to people. And we work through childcare centers, food pantries, domestic violence recovery centers. We are currently in 12 counties in Ohio and started this little adventure in 2018. It's been quite right. And it's, it's just a real profound need in everywhere we are. And so, I just want to tell you a little bit about that, and how we got started, and that sort of thing. So, maybe some of you have children, or have a memory of having children.
Yeah, that's, that's mine.
That's mine, that's mine, too. So, have you ever known anyone that has had to leave a diaper on a child for a day? Maybe missed work because they didn't have diapers to take to daycare. These are, have never been my realities, but certainly the realities of a lot of moms that are in the middle of the poverty line. So, what we do is we provide diapers to entities, childcare centers. It really, it really touches my heart because we are able to buy all the diapers the mom's going to need, they are at the childcare center. So, she doesn't have to worry about bringing them. So, they're provided, the daycare is able to change the child on a regular basis. So, that's a wow. That, that is one of the things that really touches me because I think nothing is worse than thinking about babies sitting in a dirty or still ill diaper for a day. And that, that is a reality. And some moms maybe use a Kroger bag, or a plastic bag, or a newspaper, or towel, kind of whatever they have when they run out of diapers. So, and probably most of you know that diapers cannot be purchased with any kind of government money. So, the SNAP and what does not provide diapers, can't purchase diapers if there's anything that's taxable, can't be purchased with your SNAP or your SNAP. So, that's kind of where we come in. We provide the diapers for them. Our goal isn't to provide diapers, like every diaper you need. That's not what we do. We come in and help kind of in that gap. Kind of like the way food pantry started. They started to be, provide food for the end of the month of the gap when people were out. So, that's kind of, that's our philosophy on that. If you've never had children, I will tell you that diapers, disposable diapers, cost about $70 or $80 a month if you're changing them regularly. Most of the moms, like I said, don't have that luxury. Maybe they have one a day. And the child, a child needs about 1,200 diapers for their first year. So, by the time they're potty trained, they're going, they need about $7,000 diapers. So, there is an end, which is nice. But you can look forward to it if you've had children, and you can't hardly wait for them to move on. So, this idea of Bottoms Up came from my husband. He's, I wish he could have been here tonight because he's, he can kind of fill in all the gaps if you have questions. But he knew the need for diapers for single moms and moms living below the poverty line. And we were, 2018, we were going to celebrate our 40th anniversary. And he says, let's, let's collect diapers. Let's get 40 bucks a diaper served here before marriage. Let's ask our family of friends to donate, to give us diapers. So, we did that. We got about 80 boxes delivered to our porch. And from then, he said, this has legs. Let's just keep doing this. So, 2018, August 2018, we're giving away about 3,000 diapers a month. Currently, we're giving over 60,000 diapers a month away, and have given away rough over a million diapers since we began. So, we'll probably be at about 700,000 this year. And it's, it's, like I said, it's, it's been amazing because in 2020, we all know what happened, right? We were just, we finished 2019 pretty strong. 2020 came, and we had a, kind of three things happened. So, we were delivering diapers, and then the pandemic came. So, that meant half of our supply went away because we get diapers from, do diaper drives. I forgot to mention that. Diaper drives through churches, schools, and businesses. Well, everybody shut down, so half of our supply went away. And then we, within that happening, about six weeks, our demand doubled. So, we went from about 28,000 diapers a month, about 6,000 diapers a month. So, that was another challenge. And then we were granted into this kind of sweet deal with the property being a hole, where we would pay about four cents a diaper. So, that is unheard of. And we were ordering diapers all through the pandemic, and our supply chain was strong. I mean, nobody could get toilet paper, but we were getting diapers. It was divine providence, I think. But then someone decided that we weren't supposed to be in this program, so that went away. So, all three of those things happened within about 60 days. But for whatever reason, we kept all the strong, and we were able to survive. So, 2021 came, and we have just been increasing, let's see, we were in six counties at the beginning of 2021. We're now, like I said, we're now in 12 counties. So, never, we've not solicited anyone to be part of our distribution. We will call me all the time. And started four new partners, what we call our community partners, starting this week. So, it's, it's, it's just been, it's a wonderful experience. I've never said no to anybody, which is a little bit scary. I can tell my husband, should I say no, or pump the brakes on any of this? But it's, it's all worked out. It's all just happened the way it's supposed to happen. So, that's us. And I know I'm probably forgetting something, so I will entertain questions if you have that.
How do you donate to your, to your company?
How do we donate to?
Yes. How, how can somebody donate to you? And like, what's your most popular newborn?
Yes, great questions. We have an online giving portal through our website, bottomsup.life. And you can donate diapers through there, or make a donation one time, or you can do a monthly donation through that portal. And what was your second question?
What's your most popular diaper? Newborn?
No.
Really?
Our most in high, most demand is the bigger sizes. So, five and six are the ones that we, we just can't. My husband just ordered $4,500 with the diapers today, size five, because we're totally out.
How do they reach out to you, or how do, how do they know to reach out to you?
Sure. Great. Another good question. So, our partners have to sign their agreement with us. And what we do is we provide 300 diapers of every size they need. So, when we start a partner, they get 300 diapers of every size. So, that's newborn through six. And we also give baby wipes. So, when it's their week to deliver, they text me or email me and say, Joe, I need sizes three, five, and six in wipes. So, that's what I deliver. And we deliver to them. We have three delivery vans, one, a big one here in Columbus, and then we have a couple of small ones that we service the other counties.
Excellent.
One, one other thing you forgot to mention. Oh, I'll, I'll stay. After our meeting at the Whitehall Bexley Rotary, I went over to Victory Ministry of Hope. You want to talk about?
Yes. So, Laurie contacted, was just so excited about us. And she come, she went over to talk to Victory Ministries, and Lindsay there reached out to me, and we started delivering diapers there today. And we got through the paperwork, and it was very simple. And that's kind of my process. I like to meet with people, see their, what they're, how they do things. And I always tell all of our partners, you know, I've been given a great gift, and all of our donors expect me to be a good steward. So, I expect my partner to be a good steward of what I'm giving them. So, that's kind of my process of just having a conversation, meeting with them, and, you know, getting a feel for what they're doing. But I was able to deliver to them. I wrote this down, Laurie, because I wanted to tell you. We delivered over 2,000 diapers to them today. And in money terms, we pay about 17.8 cents a diaper now. So, that sweet deal that we were in went away. So, it's about 17 cents, maybe, maybe a penny more, a penny less. But I think my husband said today, for the size five, there were 20 cents of, 20 cents a diaper. So, we deliver those, and, and then we deliver wipes. And those are not three cents. That's, that's the least expensive thing that we deliver. But, so, that was exciting. I'm excited to work through that partnership with them. And I know they're growing rapidly. It's beautiful facilities, very nice.
What was the name of your portal again?
It's bottomsup.life, L-I-N-E.
Okay. Thank you. That's beautiful what you're doing. That's wonderful.
Thank you.
God bless you.
Thank you.
Do you work with Celebrate One?
I, I get this question a lot, and I have not been able to get a connection with them. So, like I said, I don't solicit, but it is one of those that I've tried to get ahold of somebody, and I talk to so many people. They say, hey, I know a contact that's over you want, and I just can't. For whatever reason, I haven't been able to do that. I do work with moms to be out of high state, and, you know, we work with Children's Hospital, and just, and the list goes on and on. But it's, it's beautiful to be able to help just a little bit.
Oh, absolutely. My daughter's a NICU nurse, so bless you for, for all that you're doing for her.
Thank you. Any other questions for me?
Thank you very much.
Earlier, Laurie characterized what you do as love, faith, and passion. Apparently, it's contagious. When you describe for us in a short period of time what you guys have achieved, it's phenomenal. And thank you for sharing that.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. I never expected this when my husband said, do you want to run this thing? Because I have a job. And here we are.
So, I have one last question. Say, just an average lady would just walk into or try to contact you online, would you help that person out?
What I do is I find out where they are.
Right.
And if they're in service areas close to one of the pantries, then I, so I, I push them out to that because I don't deliver to individual homes.
Right.
That's our, yeah. But I, I really, there's so many resources in Franklin County and Fairfield County, that's where I live, that, you know, if they need diapers, they probably need others.
Absolutely.
So.
And a lot, a lot of people, a lot of ladies are afraid to reach out for help.
Yeah.
And that's why I'm asking these questions.
Yeah. They can certainly call me. I drive around in that minivan, and I have my phone.
I came in with Bob. I said, you know, we're actually talking diapers. I'm asking the most questions, so.
That's fine. That's fine. But, yeah, if you know somebody, they certainly can reach out to me, and I'm happy to.
Where were you years ago when I had my six?
Well, yeah, I had five, so there was nobody I could have met. But times were different. And I have a staple life, so.
Yes.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe, for coming in and representing your nonprofit, and also connecting with Victory Ministry of Hope. Because we want to, being in Whitehall, I think it's important for us to make sure that we, we service home. So, I thank you for the connection that was made.
Yeah. Now, it was great because it is, like I told you, I have little pockets of four dozen that I'm not in, just.
2,000 and 1,000 diapers. That was a big help.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, I understand we have one item for full public. Julie, would you mind sharing that?
It's from Jeff Thoeburn, 466 Maplewood Avenue, Whitehall, Ohio. The involuntarily abandoned and quite abandoned looking 31.5 acre city-owned property bordering the Big Walnut Creek at 5,000 Broad Street has crown jewel potential for development into a desirably located residential community. One needs look no further than Revelsburg Collaborative with MI Homes and MI Smart Series Houses for Proof. With trends, demands leaning towards smaller residential lots, and the 31 acres could readily include green space, retention ponds, creek side trails, and play areas, all enveloping a traditional housing development. Density embracing multi-story communal housing amalgamations are not and cannot be the one-track, all-encompassing answer to city planning.
Thank you, Juliana. I think Jeff would be excited if he saw these three exhibits on that exact area.
I think he would be.
Yeah. He's got to get out of real estate, I think. President, the Standing Committee reports, and I'd like to thank Mr. Rodriguez for taking my committee on this week. I wasn't here. So, I'd like to have him do administration and financial management.
You got it. Administration and financial management met last week. Minutes are on file. They will meet again next week sometime after, next Tuesday, sometime after 6:30.
Thanks, person. I know there's quite a few, too, that, you know.
No, no, I don't think they're on the agenda, ma'am.
Nothing? Okay. Committee and elder advocacy, Councilperson Elmore.
Thank you, President Protown. Committee and elder advocacy that meet on Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have no opening or legislation today. We will meet again next Tuesday at 6:30.
Thank you. Community Standards Enforcement, again, Chairperson Rodriguez.
You're picking on them, aren't you?
Yes.
I'll make you read every one of those lot numbers.
That's just cool.
Community Standards Enforcement also met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We're going to meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30. And we actually do not have anything on the agenda this evening.
Okay, great. Thanks. Economic Development, Chairperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President Protown. Economic Development also met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next Tuesday sometime after 6:30.
Thank you, sir. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services.
Thank you, Mr. President Protown. Infrastructure Maintenance and Services met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We have no draft of pending legislation at this time. We will meet next, or this coming Tuesday around 6:30.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. Public Safety, Chairperson Coniston.
Thank you, Mr. President Protown. Public Safety also met last Tuesday. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again Tuesday, or, I don't know, maybe around 6:30, 5:00.
Thank you. Parks and Rec Recreation, Chairperson Kanter.
Thank you, Mr. Protown. Bailey. Parks and Recreation met last week. Our minutes are on file. We'll meet again next week sometime after 6:30. And last week, I said that the Dog Park grand opening was coming very soon. It's even sooner than that. It'll be a week from tomorrow night, from 6 to 8, October 13. And I'm sure we'll say a little bit more here in a few minutes. There you go.
It's at the City Bar?
Bar-October Fest. And Dog Park is called the Central Bark.
Yeah, Central Bark. That's a, that's a, that's very neat.
Bark. Got that, Mr. Bevins?
Bark. I think we're through with the Standing Committee reports. We'll go with the official report. We'll start off with Mayor Ken Mager.
I would just like to ask council, if it pleases, for favorable consideration of '97, 2021. And basically, I and all the department heads and other elected officials are working on the 2022 budget. It's, we're in prime, pull-out-your-hair mode, at least I am. But, but we're working on that, and we'll have something to bring to you in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. That brings us to City Attorney Michael T. Bevins.
Thank you, Mr. President Protown, members of council. Thank you, everyone, for coming out this evening. Month of September, cases from the City Attorney's Office prosecuted 350 cases. Out of those 350 cases, 47 of those were committed by Whitehall residents of a criminal nature. That's about 13%. Also, because we can walk and chew gum at the same time, on October 13, the City Attorney's Office for the month of October in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I thank you for wearing purple today in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. As you know, it was founded in 1987. It's a month that recognizes domestic violence, raising awareness as it relates to those issues by sharing resources, by also giving members of the community information on how the accused are prosecuted, but as well as giving information on how victims are in power. So, what the City Attorney's Office is going to present for the very first time because of COVID and because of the way that things are now, we're going to use technology, and we're going to host a symposium on October 13 from 6 to 7 p.m. So, any individuals that would like to tune into that, it will be livestreamed on our Facebook page. You can go to our Facebook page, which is facebook backslash Whitehallwall. There will be a flyer that will be up and running hopefully by tomorrow, and we'll try to get that onto the city's website, so that you can get some more information on if you would like to tune in. Essentially, what this symposium is titled, it's titled "From the Heart." And the idea behind it is we're going to have a conversation, my office, as it relates to domestic violence. Our domestic violence advocate is going to share information, our prosecutors are going to share information as it relates to how they prosecute domestic violence cases, as well as some, some very good ideas on how to update legislation as it relates to domestic violence. Just so that the public knows, year-to-date, we have prosecuted 911 domestic violence cases in the city of Whitehall. Out of those, that's about 12%, 12.8% of all the cases, which is a little above 2,900 cases that we've handled this year. So, domestic violence this year is on the rise. So, if, if ever you want to get some information from a, from a local prosecutor's office, tune into Facebook Live, October 13 from 6 to 7 p.m., and we'll do our best to share our information. If you tune into Facebook Live, you're able to add comments, add questions. But even more so, if you would like to ask a question between now and then, you're welcome to call my office. We can be reached at 237-9802. You're welcome to email us with any questions you have as it relates to domestic violence, and we'll do our best to answer those questions on Facebook Live, October 13. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Obviously, another example of the good work that you guys do is pretty impressive.
Thank you.
Next, we have the award-winning city auditor, Dan Miller.
Thank you, Mr. President Protown. I have no official report.
Next would be Treasurer Steve Twensell.
Thank you, Mr. President Protown. I also have no official report tonight.
Good seeing you tonight, Steve.
Thanks, Ben.
Following officials' reports have been filed in the council office since the last meeting, and after the 1st morning. And it is the mayor's report, council for August, for August 2021. Under Communications, Petitions, and Claims, we have the agenda for the October 7, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, minutes for the September 2, 2021 Planning Commission meeting, notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a C1 comma C2 comma D6 liquor permit for Speedway LLC DBA, Speedway 1502, at 4790 East Broad Street, Whitehall, Ohio, 43213. Notice from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control for a D2 liquor permit for Bob Evans Restaurants LLC DBA, Bob Evans Restaurants, 436, at 3988 East Broad Street, Whitehall, Ohio, 43213. Would secretary call roll whether each member of council was given a copy of each item of legislation listed on the agenda prior to the meeting, and including any add-on legislation?
Frederikas?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. We have one item under third reading tonight, and it's Resolution 21, 2021. It's approving the recommendations, recommendations of the City of Whitehall Tax and Senate Review Council for the tax year 2020.
Thank you, Mr. President Protown. Wish to introduce Resolution 21, 2021, and move for this adoption.
Second? I have a motion by Morrison and a second by Mr. Rodriguez for the adoption of Resolution 2020, 21. Any questions, comments? Ms. Aldridge, please call roll.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Resolution 21, 2021 has been approved. Under second reading, we have ordinance 82, 2021, make a fund transfer any amount of $283,084 from the bond retirement account 101-950-57500 to the debt service fund 401. Ordinance 82, 2021 is being read by title
Ordinance eighty-two, twenty-twenty-one is being read by title only. Ordinance number eighty-three, twenty-twenty-one. Make a fund transfer in the amount of forty-six thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-four cents from the bond retirement account. That's one-on-one-dash-nine-five-zero-dash-five-seven-five-zero-zero to the debt service fund, four-on-one, and declaring an emergency. Ordinance eighty-three, twenty-twenty-one is also being read by title only. Ordinance eighty-four, twenty-twenty-one. Proving making a fund transfer in the amount of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-five cents from various accounts in the WMPITI fund, two-seventy-nine, to the debt service fund, four-on-one. Ordinance eighty-four, twenty-twenty-one also is being read by title only. That's all the second readings we have for tonight, so we'll get into the first readings. Ordinance number eighty-eight, twenty-twenty-one. Authorizing the creation of the Woodcliff Drive Realignment Expense Account, and appropriating two million, three hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars from unappropriated monies in the OPWC Improvements Fund, three-nineteen, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President Pro Tem, I'd like to introduce ordinance eighty-eight, twenty-twenty-one, and move for the, uh, suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Peck for introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance eighty-eight, twenty-twenty-one. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Coniston? Yes. Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance eighty-eight, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Peck to adopt ordinance eighty-eight, twenty-twenty-one. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-eight, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance eighty-nine, twenty-twenty-one. Proving and making a supplemental appropriation of fifty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-five cents from Tax Increment Financing Fund, two-seventy-nine, to various expense account accounts in the two-seventy-nine fund and authorizing distribution of a portion of the total service payments attributable to each tip to the affected vocational school district from the Tax Increment Financing Fund, two-seventy-nine, in the amount equal to a hundred percent of the property tax payment the vocational school district would have received of fifty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-five cents, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President Pro Tem, I'd like to introduce ordinance eighty-nine, twenty-twenty-one. Move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Rodriguez and a second by Elmore for introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance eighty-nine, twenty-twenty-one. Any comments? Ms. Aug, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
The rules have been suspended on ordinance eighty-nine, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Rodriguez and a second by Elmore for the adoption of ordinance eighty-nine, twenty-twenty-one. Any discussion? Ms. Aug, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance eighty-nine, twenty-twenty-one has been approved. Ordinance ninety, twenty-twenty-one. Proving and making supplemental appropriation in the amount of four thousand, sixty dollars and ninety-two cents from unappropriated monies in the WMPITI fund, two-seventy-nine, to the various accounts in the WMPITI fund, two-seventy-nine, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President Pro Tem, I'd like to introduce ordinance ninety, twenty-twenty-one. Move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Rodriguez and a second by Coniston for suspension of rules on ordinance ninety, twenty-twenty-one. Any comments? Ms. Aug, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance ninety, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Rodriguez and a second by Coniston for adoption of ordinance ninety, twenty-twenty-one. Any comments? Ms. Aug, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety, twenty-twenty-one has been approved. Ordinance ninety-one, twenty-twenty-one. Proving and making supplemental appropriation of seven thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-four cents from the Tax Increment Financing Fund, two-seventy-nine, to various expense accounts in the two-seventy-nine fund and authorizing the distribution of a portion of the fees, fee payments attributed to each tip in the total amount of seven thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-four cents to the tip fees account, two-seventy-nine-point-zero-zero-point-five-nine-six-zero-zero, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President Pro Tem, I'd like to introduce ordinance ninety-one, twenty-twenty-one, and move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Elmore for suspension of rules on ordinance ninety-one, twenty-twenty-one. Any comments? Ms. Aug, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance ninety-one, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Rodriguez and a second by Elmore for adoption of ordinance ninety-one, twenty-twenty-one. Any comments? Ms. Aug, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-one, twenty-twenty-one has been approved. Ordinance ninety-two, twenty-twenty-one. Proving and making a supplemental, supplemental appropriation of twelve thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents from previously unappropriated monies in the WMPITI fund, two-seventy-nine, to the Ether Road Incentive Account, two-seventy-nine-point-zero-zero-point-five-zero-zero-zero-eight, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President Pro Tem, I'd like to introduce ordinance ninety-two, twenty-twenty-one. Move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Rodriguez and a second by Morrison for introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance ninety-two, twenty-twenty-one. Any comments? Ms. Aug, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance ninety-two, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Rodriguez and a second by Morrison for adoption of ordinance ninety-two, twenty-twenty-one. Any comments? Ms. Aug, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-two, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance ninety-three, twenty-twenty-one. Proving and making supplemental appropriation of sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-one cents from previously unappropriated monies in the WMPITI fund, two-seventy-nine, to the Air South Urban Renewal Incentive Account, two-seventy-nine-point-zero-zero-point-five-zero-zero-zero-six, making a fund transfer in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-one cents from the Air South Urban Renewal Incentive Account, two-seventy-nine-point-zero-zero-point-five-zero-zero-zero-six to the Economic Development Incentives, Incentives forward slash Planning Fund, three-sixteen, making a supplemental appropriation of sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars and twenty-one cents from the Economic Development Incentives Fund, three-sixteen, to the Economic Development Incentive Account, three-one-six-point-zero-zero-point-five-zero-zero-zero-zero, and declaring an emergency.
You done that? Uh, Mr. President Pro Tem, I'd like to introduce ordinance ninety-three, twenty-twenty-one. Move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Rodriguez and a second by Morrison for introduction and suspension of rules on ordinance ninety-three, twenty-twenty-one. Are there any comments? Can we get English? Are there any comments? Ms. Aug, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance ninety-three, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Rodriguez and a second by Morrison for the adoption of ordinance ninety-three, twenty-twenty-one. Are there any comments? Ms. Aug, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-three, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance ninety-four, twenty-twenty-one. Proving and making supplemental appropriation of eighty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents for unappropriated monies in the General Fund, one-on-one, to the Board of Health Expense Account, one-on-one-point-nine-five-zero-point-five-eight-five-zero-zero, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President Pro Tem, I'd like to introduce ordinance ninety-four, twenty-twenty-one. Move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Rodriguez and a second by Coniston for suspension of rules on ordinance ninety-four, twenty-twenty-one. Any comments? Ms. Aug, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance ninety-four, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Rodriguez and a second by Coniston for the adoption of ordinance ninety-four, twenty-twenty-one. Any comments? Ms. Aug, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Ordinance ninety-four, twenty-twenty-one has been adopted. Ordinance ninety-five, twenty-twenty-one. Amending zoning map attached to chapter one-one-two-two of the nineteen-seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and as subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under one-one-two-three-point-ten-C twenty-nine to allow Express Wash Concepts LLC to operate a car wash establishment, establishment on the property located at three-six-five-seven East Main Street, parcel zero-nine-zero-dash-zero-zero-eight-three-seven-one owned by three-six-five-seven East Main Street LLC. This ordinance is being read by title only and the Planning Commission will meet on this, this Thursday, October the seventh. Ordinance number ninety-six, twenty-twenty-one. Amending the zoning map attached to chapter one-one-two-two of the nineteen-seventy codified ordinances of the city of Whitehall, Ohio, and subsequently amended, allowing a special permit under one-one-two-three-point-ten-C one to allow MS Consultants, Inc. to operate a restaurant establishment with a drive-through on a property located at thirty-six forty-six East Main Street, parcel zero-nine-zero-zero-zero-zero-zero-one-nine-three-dash-zero-zero owned by Billy and Company. This is also, ordinance ninety-six, twenty-twenty-one is being read by title only and will also be in front of the Planning Commission October the seventh. Ordinance ninety-seven, twenty-twenty-one. Authorizing and approving an appropriation in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars from unappropriated monies in the American Rescue Plan Grant Fund, two-oh-nine, to the American Rescue Plan Grant Fund Expense Account, two-oh-nine-point-zero-zero-point-five-zero-zero-zero-zero, declaring an emergency.
Mr. President Pro Tem, I'd like to introduce ordinance ninety-seven, twenty-twenty-one. Move for the suspension of all rules.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez and a second by Ms. Peck for introduction, suspension of rules on ordinance ninety-seven, twenty-twenty-one. Are there any comments? Ms. Aug, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Rules have been suspended on ordinance ninety-seven, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Rodriguez and a second by Peck for the adoption of ordinance ninety-seven, twenty-twenty-one. Are there any comments? Ms. Aug, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore? Yes. Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes. Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Ordinance ninety-seven, twenty twenty-one has been approved. Ordinance number ninety-eight, twenty twenty-one, amending the zoning map attached to chapter one one two two of the nineteen seventy codified ordinances of the City of Whitehall, Ohio, and has subsequently amended, changing the zoning of property located on East Broad Street, Hamilton Road, Woodcliff Drive, Megacliff Drive, and Pop Road, parcel numbers listed in appendix A. From the apartment district A two, exceptional use EU, and floodplain district FP two, planned unit development PUV, property owned by City of Whitehall, and declaring emergency. Uh, this ordinance ninety-eight, twenty twenty-one is being read by title only, and, uh, will be before the Planning Commission on their meeting this Thursday, October the seventh. Resolution twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one, authorizing the mayor to place a prospective applicant for the position of dispatcher at a, at an A step E, wait a minute, let me start that over, at A step E in compliance with section seventeen point two of the current labor agreement by and between City of Whitehall and the Fraternal Order of Police, High Labor Council Incorporated, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President Proton, I'd like to introduce resolution number twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one. I'd move for the suspension of the rules, please.
Second?
I have a motion by Cantor and a second by Morrison for introduction and suspension of rules for Resolution twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one. Any comments? Ms. Alden, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Rules have been suspended on Resolution twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President Proton. Move to the doubt, please.
Second?
I have a motion by Cantor and a second by Ms. Morrison for the adoption of Resolution twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one. Are there any comments? Ms. Alden, would you please call a roll?
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Coniston?
Yes.
Cantor?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Morrison?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes. Resolution twenty-eight, twenty twenty-one has been adopted. It's a next opportunity for full public. If anybody wants to come forward, your name and address, you have three minutes to share. Nothing from, uh, from you either, Secretary, to bring this community date forward. What's going on?
Well, like I said, we have the grand opening of the, uh, Dog Park next Wednesday night. Um, Day My Atmosphere, um, will be, uh, live music, refreshments, including food truck. Uh, the live music will be from, uh, J.T. Heller, from six to eight P. M. Um, hope to see a lot of people out there.
And also, Michael's, uh, domestic violence workshop.
Yeah, it won't be at the Dog Park, it's like this.
But, but it will be recorded, so.
Yeah.
That's good. Uh, tomorrow's, uh, unlimited trash pickup.
Yes. The sixth, it's the third one this year.
Yes.
I think the next last one's around Christmas.
Yes.
Yeah, twenty, uh, that sound right? December twenty-nine on that one?
Well, I know it's up to Christmas, between Christmas and New Year's is the last one of the year.
Early antlers and voting started today in, in the course of your absentee, uh, early voting with seventeen hundred more roads, and start big, so hoping everybody gets on the boat.
Go book, go book. In addition to, uh, domestic awareness, it's also breast cancer awareness, so let's go ahead and get those manograms and, uh, get them scheduled.
Anybody have anything else?
I will next week.
Oh, free stream?
All right, Mr. Sir.
Okay.
Little break, Council, uh, start off with Councilperson Rodriguez.
Thank you. Um, Lori, thank you for bringing, uh, Joe Walton. When I heard the name Joe Walsh, I thought we were gonna get a car call or something. No, it's wonderful what she does. It's, uh, like, like you guys said, you know, love, faith, compassion. It's just, uh, that was inspiring, just, just listening to her. And, um, definitely want to get to her website and help out a little bit, so I challenge everyone to do the same if they can. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Councilperson Elmore.
Thank you, President Proton. Thank you, everybody that is, uh, watching and who have come. Uh, down at the peaks is probably a year and a half at Hamilton Crossing. I met her, um, and invited her. I'm glad you showed up, um, because I always do this evening. Uh, also, I just want to, um, thank Joe again for, for coming. That is a worthy cause because we just never know when people need help, and a lot of people need help now because of lost jobs or not returning to, um, jobs or just, you just never know what the situations are. Also, be mindful that people are experiencing some, you know, mental health that's on the rise, and we just want to be mindful and keep those people in our prayers. And, um, thank you, Attorney Evans, for letting us know about domestic violence, and I will be too, and I don't have anything else. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Councilperson Coniston.
Thank you very much. I'd just like to thank everybody for coming and, and we're happy for viewing.
I can't.
Well, you're next. Councilperson can.
Thank you, Mr. Proton. Um, thank you all for coming. Nice to see you out there ladies. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for watching. Um, I know with here in Whitehall, we do, um, put our flags out for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and Karen touched on it, normally her and I will touch on it. Um, every year, it seems like it's her and I do this, but it's hit our family deeply in the last four years, and that is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Um, over two hundred and thirty-eight thousand women are affected each year, and one in, it's about eight of these women die, so, um, it's very important. So I just wanted to touch on that again. Mr. Evans, thank you very much, uh, for your statistics. Um, hopefully, these will start coming down real soon. I realize it's, uh, thirteen percent of, uh, Whitehall residents have about three hundred and fifty-six. I noticed through visits that came by the city when I saw that, so, uh, that's, uh, that's all I have to say. I think I'll see everybody next Wednesday. I won't be here next Tuesday, so, thank you so much. High growth, better luck. There you go. Proud of you, Elizabeth. You played really well, didn't you?
I can't follow that.
Uh, Councilperson Peck.
Thank you, President Proton. Uh, thank you, everybody that's watching. Thank you, ladies, for coming to the whole community. Um, thank you, Lori, for bringing Joe. I haven't heard of that nonprofit, so it's always great to hear about, um, additional nonprofits helping our community. Um, thank you, Jeff, for writing in at the beginning for our first poll public. Uh, that's really all I have. I hope everybody has a good week.
Next, we have Councilperson Morrison.
Thank you, Mr. President Proton. I'd like to thank everyone for, uh, attending the meeting tonight, and for everyone's comments and information, very good information put out there this evening, and everybody, thank you, everyone, for watching, and have a good evening.